Hello, hello, we're testing 1212. We are live. India, can you hear me? Just testing it out.
Okay, I'm live, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Awesome.
Oh, great, great. For a minute, you know, we get lost in the Zoom calls and book the world, so I'm like, I'm waiting.
Right, right, but we're good, we're good to go, we're good to go.
Alright, sounds like we, we're starting in a few minutes.
Okay.
Letting people in.
Awesome.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna welcome everyone, as we come in, we're gonna go over introductions in a minute, but um, I know that we're gonna transition to translations and any other logistical pieces before we dive into the forum. I just wanna say once again, welcome to the community for showing up to the forum. District 5 candidate forum for translation, please call the number and it will prompt you to, it will ask for an access code. Just punch in the access code and you will be able to, to get a translator. And we're waiting. I also wanna just highlight and, and if you wanna type in, don't be shy into the chat box of your name, which you represent, what school you're coming from. Type it in, type it in. During difficult times, it's, it's hard to engage in the virtual world, it's lovely just to hear that we're not alone on the other side.
Also, for any other schools that are here, you can also put any information or questions you have in the chat box. This is a live forum, so if you have questions that come up or comments about anything that you hear, feel free to put them in the chat. You'll also see across the bottom, some of your questions and comments will scroll, so you'll have an actual real-time engagement with the candidates, so please feel free to put all your guys' comments in.
Beautiful, beautiful. And, and I see we have about forty-three people on, on, on this virtual forum, super excited. So, exciting, exciting thing. Once again, if you are just joining, don't mean to sound repetitive, but we have new folks jumping in here. Making sure that if you need translating services, to dial the number that is on the screen, if you have a price for Spanish, among mom or Arabic, type in that number and type in the access code right after that, please. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I see the, the chat on Facebook is blowing up with people representing their, their schools or community.
They're coming in already, we have some representatives from Ascend, as well as Latitude, thank you guys so much.
Loving it, loving it. Coming in with the heat, thank you, thank you, we need that energy on the Thursday and nowadays, a good energy, it's a beautiful energy, so I appreciate it. We got more folks jumping online, if you need translating services, please transition to the, to the line that's on the, just call the number for the translating services and let it jump in. We got two more minutes, two more minutes before we start, I just wanted to make it known. We're gonna start with introductions and a quick data overview, and then we're gonna dive in into asking the questions to the candidates. Once again, welcome, welcome everyone, thank you for being here today. Keep, keep dropping your shout-outs into the chat, loving it. India, are you, are you seeing them? They're, they're still going, they're still going, and I'm loving it.
I'm getting a couple of them, I think it's a little delay, I'm trying to see. Sixty-one folks, okay, our numbers are going up, alright now, awesome.
Thank you, thank you, alright, one more minute, we're gonna go ahead and transition to introductions and data overview, and I just wanna give one last plug, if you need a translator, please go ahead and give a call to the number that's on the screen, put in the access code, and you will have a translator. Thank you, thank you, we got Lighthouse in the house, we got Stan, we got OUSD in the building, Inspire Schools, thank you, thank you for being here.
Awesome. Okay, aspire, aspire mom, yay, I aspire! Excited, yes.
Yeah, I, I, before we jump into, uh, into welcoming data overview and introductions, I, I just wanna name India for, for everyone on, on this call, it is my first time being a moderator and I'm super excited to be here.
Tonight's forum is also dedicated to Rachel Willis Henry, who was a champion for Oakland families, not just for Oakland families, but for equitable education options for all families and one of my very nearest and dearest friends, so this one goes out to her and her babies and all the hard work that we're still benefiting from in OUSD.
For sure, yeah, I, I, I had the pleasure to meet Rachel and she was just amazing here being, and I know she's watching over us, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, she'd be screaming in my ear right now. If you met her, then you understand.
Yes.
Good vibes.
Beautiful, beautiful. Alright. So we got seventy-two folks, alright, it's, it's, uh, we got seventy-two folks on the line, so we're gonna jump in and into welcomes and introductions. First of all, good evening to everyone, thanks for coming to our Oakland Unified School District Candidate Forum for District 5. We are so excited to have you, all of you, all of you guys here, I really wanna be thankful for, for your time and also the candidates for, for making time in their schedules to be part of this virtual, virtual world and virtual dialogue around District 5 and education of the future here for, for District 5. Before I introduce myself, I really wanna give a big shout-out to the families, to the students, and to all the educators in Oakland for just keeping it moving, right? We are living through a pandemic, through fires, and a lot of other different obstacles that are getting in our way, and, and, and you guys are there, students, I'm sure there's some students online right now, and, and I appreciate all of you guys. My name is Christian Martinez, I'm the dean of students at Latitude and co-founder, and I'm super excited to be here. I was asked the question, why do you wanna be moderator? And I said, it's because this, I've been doing this work for about ten years now, and I've been in, in the shadows just doing the work, but it's time to step up and take a bigger role and definitely help people make the best decision for the future, cuz nowadays, with everything that's going on in the world, we gotta make sure that we are all in sync and elevating in community, so I really wanna appreciate you guys for doing that and tapping into me to, to be here today. Diving in into data, in total, Oakland Unified School District is home to sixteen thousand eight hundred sixty-six charter school public school students. Thirty-two percent of the district's total students population. In District 5, over five thousand families have chosen charter schools. OUSD charter students are twenty percent black, fifty-seven Latino, seventy-four percent are socio-economically disadvantaged, meaning that they qualify for freely reduced lunch, are homeless, migrant, or in foster care. In addition, twenty-eight percent of our English learners, ten percent are students with IEPs. Oakland Charter Schools serves a similar population to district traditional schools, which are twenty-two percent black, forty-four, forty-four percent Latino, seventy-two percent socio-economically disadvantaged, thirty-three percent English language learners, fourteen percent district traditional school who have an IEP, and we proud to say that we serve disadvantaged communities in, in Oakland, right? District 5 is the district tonight the candidates hope to represent. It's home to eleven charter schools serving over four thousand students. Many of these charter schools and families are viewing this event today, shout-out to all of you. We, as many as public schools, as students and families and partners and community members are here today around the city. With that being said, I wanna pivot to my co-moderator, India, you got the mic now.
Thank you, Christian, well, for those that don't know me, again, my name is India Cleveland. I am a lifelong Oakland resident, I am a graduate of OUSD, I also am a parent of a student that has actually been in traditional public school as well as charter school. And, um, this election is huge for myself and other families because this is our option right now, and it's important that parents are aware of the power that they have and the power that their voice carries, especially in elections as huge as this one, so I definitely wanted to be here and I'm grateful for the opportunity, just so you guys will be able to see who was directly affected by some of the major choices that you guys will be making. So I do wanna also thank you all for being here. We know when we get involved and raise our voices and call on our elected officials to prioritize student equity and access to high-quality schools, the entire public school system improves for all kids. Your voice matters and your vote matters. Please give yourselves a round of applause for being here and demonstrating your agency and power. I would like to personally acknowledge Ascend, Latitude High, Thirty-seven Point Eight, Achieve Academy, Lazzier Charter Academy, Community School for Creative Education, Aspire Edis Academy, Aspire College Academy, whoop, whoop, that's my baby school. Lighthouse Community Charter School, Loadstar Arise High School, Oakland Unity High School, Oakland Charter High School, and Urban Montessori for co-hosting this forum in collaboration with Families in Action for Quality Education, a coalition of charter schools across Oakland. Let's make some noise and clap it up for these amazing schools who are making sure that they are educated and informed about the upcoming school board election. And guys, make sure also throughout the forum, any questions, anybody that comes in late, make sure you shout out your schools in the chat. We definitely wanna recognize and make sure all of our schools are acknowledged for being here and taking your time out on this Thursday evening, you could be anywhere else, but you're here with us and we, we really do appreciate it. So, let's see here. First, I would like to introduce Rosio Gonzalez, who was a FIA Oakland Parent Leader from Lazzier Academy, who will tell us more about herself and introduce Families in Action for Quality Education.
Seems like the video is loading at the moment, so we are waiting patiently, it's coming, it's coming.
And Rosio is fire, we have definitely heard her speak and advocate for students before, and if you haven't, she's definitely like amazing, amazing.
The numbers for translation are back up, I saw some things in the chat, naming that they wanted the translator numbers.
Okay.
We got them on, on the screen right now. So we wait, make sure that everybody's on. Thank you for your patience, we got seventy-eight folks on, on Facebook Live right now, keep, keep dropping your messages or shout-outs. It's love, thank you, thank you.
And Lazzier Charter Academy parents here.
Alright.
Thanks for your patience, guys, we're having some little technical difficulties. Priscilla, can you try to pop up Ms. Rosio's video for me, please?
So it looks like, just looking at the chat, uh, see, Rosio is famous, and so she's getting a whole lot of shout-outs in the chat, too. They're waiting for that video, they're waiting to see what she wants to hear.
Lots of love out there. Thank you for your patience, thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone, for holding me down. We, we live in the virtual world nowadays, so we appreciate your patience. Alright, looks like we got it now.
We getting some shout-outs from some teachers, too, they say they've been dealing with a lot of technical issues during this Zoom school, so they're okay. So they're, they're not worried, and as a Zoom parent, I concur. It's been, it's been a huge adjustment, so this isn't, this is every day for us right now. This is our new normal, our new adjustment.
Priscilla, can we go on to the next video, if that's, if the next one will play, and we'll definitely come back to Rosio's video?
Thank you for the good energy out in the chat, giving shout-outs to the moderators, thank you, thank you, thank you, appreciate that. India, is this your first time doing something like this off the bat?
Um, moderating, yes. Being active in OUSD, no. As I mentioned Rachel before, Rachel and I actually both attended school together since elementary, and when we became adults and had our own children, she kinda got me into the parent advocating portion. So for, I'd say, probably the last three or four years, like school board meetings and being out and canvassing and, and talking about equitable education options for families and just trying to get that word out, a lot of parents don't realize that a lot of resources at their fingertips here, kinda just feel like, you know, whatever we get, that's what we get, so she definitely sparked a fire to, you know, just empowering our community and making sure that they know that their voices can be heard, so when this opportunity came up, we definitely couldn't, couldn't let that go by.
Beautiful, that is beautiful, thank you for sharing. Looks like we've still got some technical difficulties, I know we ran a little bit behind time, but stay with us, it's, it's gonna be an amazing forum. I also wanna appreciate the candidates for holding tight. Back, holding it down, thank you, thank you, thank you.
We have Maya Riley from Cox Academy also in the child, in the chat, excuse me, welcome Maya. Other families, Lilian said Rachel inspired many of us. Yeah, she did.
Beautiful.
Oh, we actually have a question for us in the chat, I guess we can answer while we're waiting, so I'll let you go first, so Akeem asked, what schools have each of you attended? What school do your children go to and why should a parent vote for you? Well, no, that part's not for us, so, um, what school have you attended and if your student goes to?
Yeah, for I, well, for me, I went to, I arrived here when I was ten, I was born in Nueva Ecate, Mexico, um, and I came here when I was ten, I went to Allen Dale Elementary, and then Red Heart, and then after that, I went to Fremont, Paltiger. But yeah, those are the three schools I went to OUSD, and of course, there's more to that story, but yeah, I don't have kids, but I have a hundred and fifty of them at Latitude, which I
Well, you have children. They're, they're, they're yours, you know, from eight to two, eight to three, so you, you're a bonus parent, we appreciate you. So that, that's awesome. As, as I said, I'm a lifelong member of Oakland, so I have attended quite a few schools of Oakland, um, elementary was Webster Academy, which is no longer Webster, which is weird. I went to Freak Middle School as well as Haven Squirt, and I graduated from Oakland Tech Bulldogs. So yeah, um, my daughter started off in traditional public, and we, early on, converted over to charter where she has been a charter student for about six years for, for ACA, so the charter system seems to be working for us, but you know, it's different strokes for different folks. But it's, it's, we definitely have, we definitely been in the charter system for a while.
Sure. Yeah, that was, that was a big question, thank you everyone for sharing. Can we check with Kimmy really quick to see where we at, I know it's been about ten minutes or so, so, any updates?
I'm wondering if we could get started with the first question, since we do have access to the script.
We do, we do, we do.
I think we should get it going.
Nice.
For a little bit.
Alright, how about we just go ahead and do, uh, oh, Kimmy's back.
Oh yeah, yeah, we're good, let's jump in with the, let's jump in with the lightning round questions, we're still working on pulling those videos up, thanks so, so much for your patience, we appreciate you guys.
Appreciate it, alright, at this time, India, we gonna, we gonna freestyle it, and I'm pretty good at that, so here we go. Uh, we gonna go ahead and introduce the, the candidates first, I mean, they're in backstage, I'm sure all of you guys can see them. But we gonna go ahead and start with Mike Hutchinson, please go ahead and introduce yourself really quick.
Great, thank you, thanks for having me here, are we just doing names or are we going through a minute or two-minute intro?
Just go ahead and do names really quick, that way we can start to flow with the
Perfect, Mike Hutchinson, proud graduate of Oakland Public Schools here in District 5.
Thank you, thank you.
And as soon as we do candidate names, we're ready to roll on the videos.
Beautiful, thank you, let's go with Jorge. Oh, you're muted.
I will unmute you, Jorge, I apologize.
Uh, my name is Jorge Levma, and I'm glad to be here.
Thank you. Last man out, Leroy.
Hi, my name is Leroy Gaines, I am a long time, sorry, Leroy Gaines, longtime principal here in Oakland, running for our school board here in B5.
Beautiful, thank you, thank you, we gonna bounce back to the videos now, Kimmy, you, you got the control there.
Hice mamá voluntaria de las ciertas desde hace treinta años. Hola, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Rosy González, hice mamá voluntaria de las ciertas desde hace treinta años. Esta noche quiero compartir un poquito los logos que he tenido con mi comunidad. Hace nueve años el distrito decidió cerrar nuestra escuela y nosotros gracias al poder y la voz que tuvimos, logramos mantener nuestra escuela abierta. Otro de los ejemplos que tengo trabajando con esa comunidad es tener una escuela nueva para nuestros estudiantes. Otra de las cosas que quiero compartir con ustedes es, hace cuatro años yo trabajé muy duro para la campaña de U-Trainado y eso fue algo muy especial para mí. Conocer a las personas que van a estar en la mesa directiva representando a nuestros estudiantes. Creo que esta noche todos estamos aquí porque todos queremos un mejor futuro, una mejor educación para nosotros. El apoyo para todos esos niños que tengan escuelas de alta calidad. No importa que sea una escuela chava o una escuela tradicional. Lo que importa aquí es hacer el cambio y de eso puede ser posible. Quiero hablarles un poquito de FIA. FIA es una organización de familias en acción para educación de alta calidad. Desde marzo del dos mil diecinueve, hemos trabajado en formar un grupo.
It looks like we lost the sound.
Que tengan la misma educación, no importa donde estemos ni quienes somos, todos son igual para Oakland. El distrito de Oakland tiene la capacidad de cerrar o que dejan nuestras escuelas abiertas o qué edificios nos pueden dar. Eso impacta bastante a nuestras escuelas. Esta noche van a tener la oportunidad de escuchar más testimonios de personas que han estado en esas escuelas y que han pasado por cosas que queremos cambiar. Quiero darle las gracias a todos esta noche por estar aquí, gracias.
Beautiful, beautiful, thank you so much, Rosio, for being a fierce leader in the Fruitvale community at Lazzier and, um, many, you know, fighting for many students in, in the Fruitvale and beyond, so I appreciate that. We gonna go ahead and transition to our next video. It's Naomi Flores, an amazing parent from Ascend and FIA leader who's gonna, who has a call for action for all of us.
Just wanna check in, do we wanna translate a little bit of Rosio's message there?
For sure, we can, we can bring it back, India, do you have the script open?
I do, I do, so, forgive me, I'm sorry for, thank you, Rosio, so much for that message, so I'm just gonna translate her message for our non-Spanish speaking families. My name is Rosio Gonzalez and I'm a parent leader at Lazzier Academy. I'm a parent volunteer since the last thirty years. Tonight, I wanna share a little of the achievements that I've had with my community. Nine years ago, the district decided to close our school and us, and thanks to the power and voice we had, we were able to keep our school open. Another example I have working with our community is having a new school for our students. Another thing that I want to share with you is that four years ago, I worked very hard with the Trinado campaign that was very special to me, getting to know the people that are going to be on the board representing our students. I think this night, we are all here because we all want a better future, a better education for us, the support to all these children, so they can have quality schools. It doesn't matter if it's a charter school or a traditional school, what matters is to make the change and that, so that can be possible. I wanna talk a little about FIA. FIA is an organization of Families in Action for Quality Education. Since March twenty nineteen, it's been working to form a strong group, a group that's formed by students, parents, teachers, schools, principals, and board members. This group has a priority and it's to work together, to create a strong group, to create a big movement so that everyone hears our voice of students and parents. We want our schools to be better quality, that all students have the same education regardless of where we are and who we are. They are the same for Oakland. The Oakland district has the capacity to close or leave our schools open or give us a facility. This impacts our schools a lot. Tonight, you're going to have the opportunity to hear more testimonies from people that are in these schools and that have been through things that we want to change. I wanna thank everyone tonight for being here and thank you.
Beautiful, thank you, thank you once again for sharing that, India, and Rosio, thank you again for being a fierce leader and localizing the meaning to the community. Cause we're gonna transition to Naomi, who's a parent at Ascend, and we have the video, uh, ready to go.
Or, or at least we hope so.
Or at least we hope so.
There is some additional information. I guess while we're waiting, I can relay from Rosio, it says, each of us is here fighting for better education and a better future for our students. By supporting all kinds of high-quality public schools, charter and traditional, we help make that possible. By supporting all kinds of high-quality public schools, charter and traditional, we help make that possible. Families in Action for Quality Education has been engaging, educating, and building leadership capacity among families, youth, teacher, and schools. Now, our priority is to build collective power by bringing in all groups to help build a strong movement. It's time to break out of isolation and to build power. I thought that was just like super powerful because I think a lot of parents just feel like right now they don't have the power. They don't have the voice. So to actually hear that from a parent that has been in the fight, that is out there on the front lines, I think that was just like super amazing. I do thank Rosio, excuse me, uh, for that video. It's awesome.
Beautiful.
All right. Moderators, we're experiencing some more technical difficulty with the videos, not really sure what's going on. So I think we're gonna just gonna jump into the script. I want to make sure. Uh, are you getting that, Priscilla? Are you able to play the next one? If you can play it, Priscilla. Go ahead. We just can't hear the video, so you need to be in the stream for us to hear it.
Mi nombre es Naomi Flores. Soy una madre de un niño que está en el tercer grado y padre líder concret. Las elecciones del distrito escolar de Oakland son importantes para mí porque quiero una mejor educación para mi hijo y sobre todo para todos los demás estudiantes de Oakland. Les pido que se comprometen al voto y firmen el compromiso al voto. El enlace será puesto en el chat. Toma solo unos minutos. Estas elecciones son muy importantes. Hay que hacer contar nuestro voto y nuestra voz. Comprometanse a votar. Muchas gracias.
Beautiful. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and translate that. Hello, my name is Naomi Flores. I'm a mother of a child that is a third grader and also a FIA parent leader. The local district elections in Oakland are super important for me because I want I want a better education for my son and also for all of the people in Oakland. I ask you to commit voting and signing this page that is gonna pop up on your screen in a couple of seconds. Uh, the link will be shared, um, in a hat box. Um, it only takes a few minutes. The elections are very important. Let's make our voice in vote count. Commit to vote, people. Thank you so much to Naomi. Uh, so right now, if you have a phone, you can just pull your phone and put the camera right in front of this, um, scan me portion of the screen, and it will take you to a survey where we can just go ahead and place to vote. Anything you want to add, India, to that slide right there?
Uh, no. Um, I think you wrapped that up.
Nope.
You didn't move that slide forward.
So for some of our families that are not as tech savvy, all they have to do is take a picture, turn your camera on, and snap a picture of that little squiggly line coat, and then just hand the phone back over to the the little babies. They're the they're the professionals. They can handle it.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Our chat is is really blowing up right now, too. We have Larissa Adam, who is in Ascend Family Leader in the house, and she says, "Thank you, Naomi." Uh, also, Kimmy, you got a shout out from Maya Riley. So we definitely have a lot of families engaged in the chat, which is awesome. A lot of cross conversations and getting to know the candidates. Also, some shout outs to the candidates. Thank you, guys, for showing up at the forum tonight. So definitely, parents are super appreciative of you guys taking the time out to do the forum this evening.
All right. It looks like we is the next video ready. It looks like this one is where we dive into the questions.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kimmy Orta, and I'm a FIA youth leader from Alternative Nation. I'm here this evening because I want to hear from each candidate and their perspective towards public schools. Education is important for me as a first generation student. That is why it's important for me to know who is going to represent me at the school board. Now I have the pleasure of introducing the candidates for District Five. Leroy Gaines. Mr. Gaines has been an educator for twenty years and spent nine years as the award-winning principal of Acorn Woodland in elementary school with the highest performing Latino students in the city. Mike Hutchinson. Mr. Hutchinson grew up in Oakland, attending Oakland public schools, and has worked and volunteered in Oakland schools for many years. Shayla Pope Lawrence. Ms. Lawrence has twenty-nine years experience as a bilingual teacher, guidance counselor and administrator, uh, in Oakland in San Lorenzo. Jorge Lerna. Mr. Lerna was born and raised in Oakland. He was worked as a teacher and administrator and co-found Central Infantil de la Baja in La Escuelita.
Thank you, thank you. So here are our candidates that are gonna jump on board right now and kind of answer some of the following questions. We just wanted to name that. Unfortunately, Ms. Shayla Pope Lawrence is not available to join us this evening. Um, so you will now be able to hear from her today, but we have the rest of the candidates on board here. Um, thank you, thank you. Now we're gonna jump into some of the questions. Uh, the following, uh, video is a parent and an educator, um, from the Fruitvale. And the following questions are yes or no questions, right? Uh, those questions, they don't they don't need a short response.
Hello, my name is Necessity Young, and I am sixteen.
Sorry about that.
And I am a parent at Ascend and an educator at a tube academy. I'm here today because as an OU SD graduate and a parent of a student in Oakland, it is my responsibility to advocate for my daughter's future and the resources that will allow her to become a lifelong learner. Voting is important to me because not only am I advocating for my daughter, but I'm also advocating for the six hundred and ten families who trust our school with their children's education. Tonight, I will be asking candidates six yes or no questions for our lightning round. Candidates, please answer yes or no only. Question number one. We choose charter schools because they are showing success. Will you support them if they open?
All right, let's go ahead and start with, uh, Jorge.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question that well.
Okay. Uh, I can read it out loud. Uh, would you, uh, let me see. Will you support, um, would you choose charter schools because they are showing success? Will you support them to stay open?
I support any school that's successful and in, uh, is providing an equitable education, showing a quality experience, and being held accountable. Yes, I have no trouble with supporting success.
Thank you. Remember, just a reminder, just a no question so we could, uh, keep it moving. Thank you, thank you. No worries. Uh, let's go with Mike Hutchinson.
Great, thank you. I I wish it was that simple. Um, but I support the full implementation of Assembly Bill fifteen oh five, which will keep most charter schools open on renewal and close the lowest performing ones.
Yeah, um, I would support the ones that are successful. Um, if a school is demonstrating that it's not, you know, reaching the bar for renewal, then then no.
For that, we're gonna transition to the next question.
Question number two. Do you believe that all public school students, including charter school students, deserve access to public school facilities?
All right, this time we're gonna start with, uh, Mike Hutchinson.
No, I believe our public school facilities are built for our public school students, and if a private charter needs facilities, they need to be able to acquire their own.
We shake that. Let's go with Mr. Leroy.
Um, yeah, yeah. There's definitely situations where we need to make sure that we're sharing those facilities, so I'm sure there's a way to make that work, so yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Jorge.
Yes, say.
Thank you, thank you. Let's go to the next question.
Hi, my name is Maneni Sanchal, and I am a parent at Ascend and an educator at a tube academy. I'm here today because as an OU SD graduate and a parent of a student in Oakland, it is my responsibility to advocate for my daughter's future and the resources that will allow her to become a lifelong learner. Voting is important to me because not only am I advocating for my daughter, but I'm also advocating for the six hundred.
I can read, uh, all right.
Moderators, the question's on the screen if you just want to read it out.
Yep. Uh, I'll go ahead and take the next question. Here we go. Question number three, yes or no answer. If elected, will you ensure that chart that charter schools get equitable funding, including district bonds, partial tax, and other revenue? Let's go ahead and start with, uh, Mr. Leroy.
Yeah, I believe that that's, you know, if it's a public school, then there there those funds are distributed evenly, so, so yeah.
Thank you. Let's go with Jorge.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mike Hutchinson.
No.
Thank you. Um, next question. If you are elected, would you commit to visiting all of the schools in District Five, including charter schools each year? Jorge?
Yes, definitely.
Mike Hutchinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Leroy?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
You, next question. If you are elected, would you commit to listening to and meeting with parents in youth of all the schools in District Five, including charter schools? Uh, Mike Hutchinson?
Yes.
Leroy Gaines?
Uh, yes.
Jorge Lerna?
Absolutely. They are Oakland parents.
Last question of the lining round. If elected, will you support a moratorium on opening new charter schools? Uh, let's go with Leroy Gaines.
I think in under the current circumstances, we shouldn't be opening any schools until things, um, sort of settle themselves, so. Um, a permanent moratorium? No. Moratorium for opening schools currently? Yeah.
Uh, Mike Hutchinson?
Assembly Bill fifteen oh five already settles that issue, so I would fully implement that bill, and that covers new charter schools as well.
Uh, Jorge Lerna?
Yes, I I support a moratorium at this time.
Okay, that was the end of the lining round. I'm gonna go ahead and pivot to India with the following. I think you're mute, um, Mr. Kugan.
Hello, my name is Necessity Young, and.
I apologize. I had another technical malfunction, but thank you, candidates, for your yes or no responses. For all of the remaining questions for the forum, you will have two minutes to respond. Audience members, if something resonates with you again during the candidate forum, please make sure that you're putting the information in the chat box. Any questions or comments that you have? Next, I would like to introduce Necessity Young, a student from Latitude, to ask our first question.
Hello, my name is Necessity Young, and I am sixteen years old, and I am a junior at Latitude High School. I've lived in Oakland my whole life, and while living in Oakland, I've stayed in District Five. And District Five is one of Oakland's most diverse districts. In addition to English speakers, our charter schools serve Spanish, Arabic, and many other communities. We are home to eleven charter schools, and over fifty percent of our students choose charter schools in large parts because charter schools perform better and offer more diverse programs and options. Why do you want to represent students and families in District Seven?
We can go ahead and start with, uh, Jorge Lerna?
I think Indy was speaking, but a little muted there.
Okay, got it.
Thank you, Kimmy. Okay, uh, so first, yeah, go ahead, Jorge. You can answer the first question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, my purpose, it goes back to the purpose that I'm running, that there's an expectation that schooling in Oakland be transformed. We're we're seeing the end of an industrial-type, uh, factory school, assembly line, uh, kind of education that we have had in Oakland, and we need to make it more personal, get rid of a lot of the curriculum and policies that we have. I don't believe in standardized testing. I don't believe that we that we have a credible reading program because their their reading programs are related to standardized testing that favor rote, linear mechanistic, uh, type learning. So I want to see also charter schools in any school, Catholic school, parochial school, private school, Christian schools, Catholic schools also adopt this message of transforming the schools by transforming the way we assess students, by the way we, uh, the curriculum, so there's more multicultural and bilingual. And I'll just leave it at that for the moment.
Do you mute it?
Do you have a little bit more time?
No, I'm sorry. I was on mute. There was a second part to that question that didn't come through. If you could answer quickly, what would you consider your top two priorities for District Five?
Yes, um, the top two priorities is one, getting the the budget under control and, uh, eliminating or reducing the reliance on standardized testing.
Thank you so much for that answer. Um, Leroy, could you please answer the first and second question, please? It's scrolling across the bottom of the screen if you forgot it also.
Got it. I appreciate that. Um, the reason why is like, I see myself in the students in this district. I see my family and the families in this district. My mom's an immigrant. My family's immigrant. I'm first generation from Honduras. Didn't know the language, didn't know how to navigate the schools. Um, spent most of my time in food food lines, getting, you know, that that cheese that comes in the box, like that powdered milk, some of us can remember, and mixing it up with water. I don't want anyone to experience that. That was gross. Um, right, we need to make it better, and I believe education is the way to make our way out. I spent my entire career, my whole life, from day one, I've been about this. Um, so that's why I think that this is an opportunity for us to make a real change. Um, we need to move forward and and going into school board, being able to assist with policy is gonna be able to make it so that we have successful schools, um, that are serving the kids in D five, serving our Black and Brown students. And right now, we haven't done it. Um, in our charters or in our public schools, historically, we haven't done it. Uh, but I think that we're at a crossroads right now in education where we should be looking forward and developing schools that our kids deserve and being innovative and moving away from, um, from what's been the norm. We can't go back to the norm like that, so.
And Leroy, what would you consider your top two priorities if elected for District Five?
Yeah, absolutely. So the top two, one is equity. Um, making sure that we have schools that are anti-racist, that are fully inclusive. This is something that we did at Acorn Woodland. Uh, we developed a really beautiful community there for our children, and I think that we could do that across the board. Uh, the second thing is providing professional development, um, so that we can actually retain our teachers. We can retain our principals. Um, making sure that they have the services that they need. Um, I think there are some innovative things that have happened with charters and traditional district schools, um, where they share professional development and share ideas, best practices. So, um, those are two of the top ones.
Thank you so much for your response. Uh, Mike, can you please answer what do you, uh, why do you want to represent students of District Five, please?
Great, thank you. Um, first off, I'm I'm born and raised in District Five, and and again, a proud graduate of Oakland Public Schools. Um, I've lived in District Five my whole life. My, uh, both of my parents were educators before me. My mom was a kindergarten teacher for forty years in OU SD, and my dad ran the media and TV department at Peralta Colleges for over twenty years. This is something that my family's always done. And I worked for over twenty years myself directly with youth and students in Oakland until two thousand twelve, when the two schools I worked at, Santa Fe Elementary and Maxwell Park Elementary, were closed. The same year that Lazzier Elementary was closed, and I'm very familiar with the story of what happened to Lazzier. Unfortunately, the schools I was involved with weren't given the opportunity to privatize and become a charter school in order to stay open. And since that point in two thousand twelve, I've been working really hard as a community organizer and organizing around these public education issues. I believe that we can do a whole lot better here in Oakland. Uh, this, uh, dividing line of five eighty between our communities has been in place for far too long. I believe that our current school board has had the wrong policy by closing schools in our neighborhoods in order to expand quality in Hill schools. I think we can turn that around and do much better. And I just want to be explicit with everyone. I'm not here to close charter schools. I understand families' choices. I understand families' choices and the, and every families in Oakland's need to find the best opportunity for their kids. I blame the system for forcing people to make those choices. I want to improve our quality schools and ensure a quality public school in every neighborhood. I'm going to stop school closures and audit OUSD, create inclusive community engagement, and build sustainable community school.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Mike. We just have, we're already running behind. I'm trying to keep you on time. I understand. It's okay. Uh, lastly, um, thank you for your response. I apologize. Can you just quickly give me your two top priorities for District Five?
It, I, I did there. So, uh, stop school closures and audit OUSD, create inclusive community engagement, and build sustainable community schools.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and transition. Uh, now we have the pleasure to introduce Olivia Padilla, a parent from Lazir Academy, who will present a testimonial about her experience with facilities. And after Olivia, uh, Mariana Angelica Abadillo, parent from Eres will be speaking in the next question.
I'm a mother of three sons in era escolar, pertained to the school number five of Oakland. I'm still involved with the institution, and I support the education of our students. And I want to tell you my experience that I've had in the school, when I started going to the school. For three years in a school, we had to move to three different places. What we needed to do was to make adjustments, apart from the places where we moved, they were small, limited, that didn't have areas of creativity, with sports courts. So if the education has to be equal and equitable for all the children, why does it have such a difference between the public schools and the school? At the end of the day, what our parents and families said, what we said, is a quality education that prepares our children for going to university. Gracias.
I'm gonna go ahead and, and read aloud and translate that to English. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Bolivia Padilla. I'm a mother of three children of school age. I belong to Oakland District Five. I'm also involved with the organization that supports our children education, and briefly, I want to share my experience in charter schools. When my children start attending a charter school during a thirty-year span, um, we had to move three different times, three different locations. That required making a lot of changes from adjustment, adjustments. Uh, the place that we moved was very small and limited in space, uh, had no recreational area, no sport fields. So education, school education has to be the same and equitable for all students. Why is there a big difference between traditional schools and charter schools? At the end of the day, as a parent, I desire quality education, uh, that prepares my students for a better future in college. Thank you. I'm gonna transition to the video of with Mariana Angelica Abadillo, parent from Eres.
My name is Jenny Ortiz. I am a student.
Hello, my name is Maria Abadillo. My daughter is in the third grade in the School of Eres Academy. Para me, Eres has been one of the high-quality schools, where they provide a lot of patience, dedication, and support to each student. Even the level of learning is very high. As a parent, I look for a quality education, and Eres has it all. In the last ten years, Eres has been fighting to fight equitable and, um, equitable facilities to allow our, our school to grow and serve large, larger community. Two years ago, our school lost thirty million dollars because OUSD declined us the opportunity. In, in the state of California, the Prop nine law provides for all public schools and students, including charter schools and students, who have fair access to public district facilities, are paying work, paying taxes, and parcel taxes, and we are entitled to equal access under the law. However, in Oakland, charter schools do not have equal access. The Oakland Unified School District, one of the largest statewide public, uh, properties in the city, is estimated that there's fifteen thousand empty unused classroom seats in district buildings. In one of our D five schools, uh, a school is forced to pay two thousand per student for a private facility cost, taking away valuable funds for education and using the facility. In another D five charter school, children are in classrooms where sewage has leakage onto their, um, head, their classroom, where they're basing cafeteria floods whenever it rains. What steps will you take? Uh, this is moving on to the question. I, I know there was a lot. We're moving on to the questions, but we're moving fast here. Uh, what step would you take to follow, uh, the law to ensure that public school students have access to quality educate, uh, district facilities? I'm gonna read that one, that question one more time. What steps will you take to follow the law and ensure that all public school students have access to quality district facilities? I'm gonna read that one, that question one more time. What steps will you take to follow the law and ensure that all public school students have access to quality district facilities? I'm gonna go ahead and start with, uh, Leroy Gaines. As a parent, that, that is what I'm looking for in education, and Eres has it all. In the last ten years, Eres has been fighting to find equitable and, um, equitable facilities to allow our, our school to grow and serve large, larger community. Two years ago, our school lost thirty million dollars because OUSD declined us the opportunity. In, in the state of California, the Prop nine law provides for all public schools and students, including charter schools and students, who have fair access to public district facilities, are paying work, paying taxes, and parcel taxes, and we are entitled to equal access under the law. However, in Oakland, charter schools do not have equal access. The Oakland Unified School District, one of the largest statewide public, uh, properties in the city, is estimated that there's fifteen thousand empty unused classroom seats in district buildings. In one of our D five schools, uh, a school is forced to pay two thousand per student for a private facility cost, taking away valuable funds for education and using the facility. In another D five charter school, children are in classrooms where sewage has leakage onto their, um, head, their classroom, where they're basing cafeteria floods whenever it rains. What steps will you take? Uh, this is moving on to the question. I, I know there was a lot. We're moving on to the questions, but we're moving fast here. Uh, what step would you take to follow, uh, the law to ensure that public school students have access to quality educate, uh, district facilities? I'm gonna read that one, that question one more time. What steps will you take to follow the law and ensure that all public school students have access to quality district facilities? I'm gonna go ahead and start with, uh, Leroy Gaines.
Thanks. You know, um, I would say that during my last, during my last nine years, I thought it was really fortunate to have a phenomenal facility at Acon Woodland. Um, I know what the power of having a nice facility, um, means to kids. It means that we invested in them, right? Um, and having public schools, charters, um, traditional district schools, looking at the conditions across the board for our Oakland families, I think that we're not doing a great job of maintaining and keeping those facilities up on either side. Um, right? Um, for that, I say, you know, we really need to do, we need to do an audit. We need to look around and see how are the, what are those facilities like? What are the charters? Like, if there are properties, um, that are actually available, their space, um, and it means that we're not gonna have kids in, in cafeterias that are getting flooded, um, and they're trying to learn under those conditions, then yeah, we need to really make sure that we're supporting our charters. Um, it needs to be something that's worked together with the district, um, the district office, with the, the school board, with the community, right at large, to make sure that those are, um, the right moves, like to give, to give access to those facilities. But, um, I'm in agreement. Like, we shouldn't have any Oakland child going to school or being under, in a building under conditions that aren't, that aren't appropriate.
Thank you. Uh, we want to transition to Jorge Lerman.
Yes, thank you. It's a great question. I appreciate it. Uh, I would like to say that nowhere in Oakland is everybody guaranteed the same circumstances or situations or even resources. But I don't want to get into a competition of who has something that, and another one doesn't. If I would invite, uh, there's no reason that, uh, parents in charter schools should tolerate unfair, unsafe, and poor conditions. I welcome them to come back to the Oakland Unified School District to, and choose your school. I can, I have a lot to say. If I'm, uh, elected as, uh, as the director to District Five, I will make sure that all of the regular Oakland Unified School Districts meet that standard. And presently, I would invite, uh, that, those charters that are living through those conditions to leave your corporate sponsor and return back to the Oakland Unified School District, where I will stand there at the door and welcome you in and fight for you directly. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, and then we're gonna transition to Mike Hutchinson.
Great, thank you. Um, the law is being followed, and of course, as a school board member, I would always follow the law. Um, you know, but again, charter schools receive public dollars, but they're privately managed. And so if a charter school is presently being housed in an unsafe situation, that is that charter school's leaders and board's responsibility, and something needs to be done immediately, because no school leader should have their students in unsafe schools. The other thing is, this whole question kind of again adds to, um, the fact that charter schools are not public schools in the same way we think of public schools. That's why charter schools require a lease to come into public facilities. You know, I was really proud of the work that I did with a community coalition to stop the sale of public property to Eres Charter School two years ago. We did that in coalition with the principal, teachers, and parents and students from ICS and Think College Now, the public school that was two blocks away, because that sale would have threatened our traditional public school. And so there's more to this context than people are willing to really bring up here. What I want to do is to have strong public schools in every neighborhood. That is my focus and that is my desire. And I won't do this by tearing down other schools, and I'll never blame a parent for the choice they make. I will do this by making our public schools high quality, so the choices for parents will be much easier going forward.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna transition to the second question, uh, and this question is a two-pronged question, so I'm gonna go ahead and read it now. Do you believe our students deserve access to quality public school facilities? What steps will you take to follow the law and for the whole school, do students have access to, uh, quality district facilities? We're gonna go ahead and start. Let's do it. Um, Jorge Lerman?
Yes. I think what we have to understand here, the big picture is this. I am committed.
I'm, I'm so sorry. We gotta, we gotta, uh, play the next video, Christian.
Okay.
My name is Jenny Ortiz. I am a student at a Rice High School. I'm currently a senior. I joined FIA as a way to educate not only myself, but the rest of my community about charter schools in our city. Therefore, the ERS study concluded that Oakland charter schools have less funds for education, in part because we serve families with higher socioeconomic needs and funding like LCFF, concentration funding, is allocated to charter schools at the district average. Recently, the Oakland ED Fund allocated inequitable amounts of COVID relief funds to high-needs families, just because they are in charter schools. Do you believe that OUSD has done enough to ensure the funding is going to the students who generate it? As a board member, what additional steps will you take to ensure that inequ, the equitable funding is going to the most vulnerable students, including charter school students?
India, do you want to make a suggestion? Who should go first?
Uh, Mike, can you go first, please?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, ADA and funding per pupil, uh, is codified from the state. That, that comes from the state. And, you know, this is where we as a community really have a choice to make. In two thousand three, OUSD was taken over by the state of California. We already had charter schools in Oakland before that point. We had a handful of charter schools that were developed and formed by the community. And then during the state takeover, towards the end of in two thousand nine, a lot of the national charter school movement became about privatization. And under the state administrator, we saw our public schools closed and charter schools opened in their places, where now we have the highest rate of charter schools in the state of California. I don't believe that charter schools are sustainable, especially at this high of a rate. It's causing a drain on our system. And we really have to start deciding as a community, how do we want to move forward together? I believe that the best way to do that is that public dollars should be publicly managed, that we should work on a collective system, and that the solution is to improve our public schools. That is what I'm dedicated to doing. I am a product of our public schools in Oakland. It is heartbreaking that they don't perform high enough, but that is the only solution for all of our students. We will always have other options and families making the best choices for themselves. But I.
Okay, thank you.
The greater good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Jorge, can you answer the question, please?
I am committed to defending our children's infinite possibilities and our parents' ability to choose the education that they deem best. But I feel that we have to be very clear here, that Oakland Unified School District has the responsibility, it has the resources to improve the life of every child in Oakland. What we need to do is, and that's the work that I have cut out for the Oakland Unified School District. We have to re, reimagine, revision, the curriculum, the assessment, how we choose personnel, how we choose to use our resources. So again, I say that all those things that you desire, a caring teacher, a warm room, and a safe school are possible by returning and coming back to the Oakland Unified School District. But I understand.
Thank you, Jorge.
Parents leave, though.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, Leroy, can you answer the question, please, sir?
India, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Lerman still has thirty seconds more. If you wouldn't want to add, just for, uh, giving you go time.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, uh, uh, the main thing is that I understand why parents left. They felt like they weren't getting the attention, the children weren't receiving the, the education that they thought, and the parents' outreach was not there. I understand those things. OUSD has not always been a good neighbor, but I'm here to change that. I want to see all USC schools be receptive and open to the whole diversity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Leroy, please answer the question.
Well, I'm, I mean, the simple answer is no, right? Like, we haven't been equitable on our funding. Um, I don't think that the money has been getting to the kids I need it the most. Um, and when we talk about equity, we don't, we're not talking about equals, right? We're not talking about every single student gets the same ADA and wherever they're going, and we're saying that, um, those dudes that need the most get more. Um, at Acon Woodland, we, you know, we were moving, making a move to budget learning. We needed to get some material, um, some hardware. We needed computers, right, in front of our babies. Um, we couldn't get it from the district because they didn't have the funds to do it. I had to go out and find, um, foundations and individual donors to be able to bring those laptops in, um, and that really gave us an edge. And I realized then, that, you know, money does matter in schools. Getting money closer to school sites, getting money closer to our families and our parents and the teachers, and helping them make decisions that are wise, um, with a real focus on, on making, on learning, right? And being able to monitor and manage that, that's what's most important. I think, um, right now we have a lot of initiatives and not enough evidence that those initiatives were, um, that are definitely pulling in money from sites. And I think also, this is that if we're not able to develop, within OUSD, develop quality schools that bring parents and families back in, right? It's up to us to make the quality schools that keep parents in our system so that we're ma, we're able, we, we are, we are the people who are managing our own destiny. We make quality schools, parents come in, and then we have, we're able to fund the things that we know we need to.
Thank you so much. You timed us up.
Thank you, Leroy, for your response. Christian, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you candidates, and, and I want to thank, thank you Jenny Ortiz from Rice for dropping that question. That was a great question. Um, we're gonna go ahead and transition with, um, a parent from Eres, uh, Elvira Iniesta. We have a video and also a question.
Good evening. My name is Elvira Iniesta. I am a parent of four children, two of which currently attend two different public charter high schools. Their needs and interests vary widely, and as a parent, it is important for me to find a high school that will serve their needs, is a fit for our family, but most importantly is a high-quality performing high school. As a parent who has researched high-quality options, I've learned that of the top ten middle schools that serve at least fifty percent students who are low income, that nine of the top ten are charters. Across our Oakland high schools, there is a significant difference in A through G completion for Black and Latino students among charter and district schools. If you do not complete A through G, you will not be able to apply to a four-year university in California. For example, the top five high schools for A through G completion for Black students are all charter schools. For Latinx students, nine of the top eleven schools for A through G completion are charters. As a candidate for school board, it's critical to families that you recognize the success that the charter schools have accomplished and the diverse options that are being provided to students and families. If you are elected to represent District Five, how will you represent the interest of the five thousand families in District Five who have chosen charter schools?
Okay, uh, well, yes, can we get a round of applause just for those numbers? Like, I love numbers. I'm, I'm very, yeah, I need to see it, and that's, that's one of those parents that's on fire, I'm sorry. But, um, Ms. Cleveland, I know you wanted to go back over those numbers, Priscilla's gonna put them up for you in case you Okay, so if anybody missed uh the numbers that Ms. Rivera was speaking of, what she said is that nine out of ten of the top performing middle schools that are serving fifty percent or more low-income students in both E L A and math are charter schools. Nine out of ten. The top five high schools for A through G completion in Oakland for Black students are all charter schools. So, you know, the numbers are very plain and simple, and as a parent who does just as much research, I really just appreciated that, that she just made it very plain. Numbers don't lie. But, excuse me, as far as the question for the candidates, as a candidate for the school board, do you recognize the academic success and college access that the charter schools have accomplished and the diverse options that are being provided to students and families? This is actually a two-part question, I'll just get that part because it's kinda long. Uh, Leroy, could you go first, please?
I know how to work computers, trust me. Believe me. I'm having trouble with the mute button, oh, okay. So, um, these numbers are awesome. These are, this is the numbers that um we need. And I, I gotta say that we, these are the numbers we need across the board. Like Fremont should be up there, Claremont should be up, and Castlemont should be up there. Like, we need all of our schools to be able to do this. Um, I think, you know, I'm gonna applaud the results. Those are the results we need, those are Black and Brown kids um showing out, right, in these schools, making, and these schools are making it happen. You can't take that away from folks. I think that there's gonna be people who are gonna say um that the families that are going to charter schools have uh more social capital, right, are thinking, are able to say like, we need to be able to move our babies out because these schools aren't making it happen, and folks would say, we'll point to that. But at the end of the day, um, you know, as a system, as O U S D, we need to look at these charter schools and see what best practices are there. Because even if that's the case, there's definitely some real strong teaching that's happening there. As a principal, I could tell you, if I see strong teaching happening somewhere, I'd send my teachers there to figure it out, what was happening, if it was private, public, charter, whatever. Like, if they were making it happen for our kids, then we need to learn from them, so um, once again, applaud these results. Um, would love for us to have that be the case across the board.
Thank you so much, Leroy, for your response. Mike, can you answer the question also? If you don't remember, it is also scrolling on the bottom of the screen.
Oh, great, thank you. Um, and any school that has uh high-performance numbers like this, um, despite what some people on here might think, I'm, I'm not looking to close a school that's performing well. The, the thing that's different about me, though, is my emphasis is going to be on our public schools and make sure that we're raising those levels across the board. You know, we know what makes a quality school. We need an engaging culturally relevant curriculum. We need inclusive school leadership. We need to lower class sizes across the board. We need to have full wraparound services. I really want to reprioritize O U S D's budget to make those kind of schools below five eighty. And so again, the issue is, we can all pull out numbers. But the issue is, we do not have high enough performance across the board. And how are we going to, again, institutionalize that for all of our public schools across Oakland? And I don't believe two systems and a two-tiered system is the way to go. And so we, as a community, must find a way to collectively build high-quality public schools in all of our neighborhoods, and that's what I'll be looking to do.
Thank you so much, Mike. Jorge, can you answer the question, please?
Yes, uh, thank you. I, I see that you focused on high schools here. And, but, the, the issue to me is that if I step back and I look at the whole charter school experience, I'm seeing assets, I see assets here, but I also see deficits. And my purpose for being here is to eliminate the deficits, improve the assets for both sides of the equation here. It's not one style of school or the other. How do we move forward and raise the academic achievement of all our students? Yes, I recognize that there's probably some fantastic uh best practices being uh instituted in these schools and middle schools and high schools, as there are in the high schools and in the Oakland Unified School District. How do we get, we're not talking to each other yet, because I don't have control over the decision-making and policymaking of the charter schools. It's, this is a one-way conversation. I have a lot to say with the Oakland Unified School District. I don't have that equal uh authority in the charter schools. If I'm given that equal authority, I will be totally equitable in my presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, George. And the second part of the question, um, if you are elected to represent District Five, how will you represent the interest of over four thousand families in D five who have chosen charter schools? Um, Jorge, we'll start with you again since you finished, and just to clarify, the slides aren't just for high school, they're covering middle school to high school, so you can address that continuous pipeline in your response also. Thank you.
Okay, good. Uh, again, the issue is uneven uh academic achievement. And uh, for me, I'm not going to, all these children and these parents live in District Five. They deserve high-quality, aggressive, assertive leadership. To walk into a public school or a charter school and demand that there be quality programs, curriculum, that there be uh quality teachers. I absolutely do believe in that. Now, if I'm thrown out because somebody will say, well, you're, you're the director of Oakland Unified School District, you have no business on, on this campus, that's a different matter. We'll see what happens after that. But if I'm here to represent, and I wanna represent every single parent and student in District Five, I'm gonna fight for your rights equally.
Thank you so much, Jorge. Uh, excuse me, Mike, can you answer the second part of the question, please?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I think that's kind of what I was talking about in, in my last answer. Um, I really don't see this and, and serving on the school board as a job where you have this one responsibility to represent these four thousand families here. It's a different job to represent these five thousand families. It's a different job to represent the voters who might not be families uh of a school anymore. We need to come up with a comprehensive public education system in Oakland that's gonna best serve all of our students. We need to finally erase these traditional historic equity issues that have divided our neighborhoods. We need to work on healing the wounds that outsiders have come in and caused in our community over the last twenty years. I've dedicated my life to educating youth in Oakland and working in public education, and I'm the second generation in my family to do that. I think we really need to stop looking at this as how do we just serve us? And how do we come up with a system that's going to best serve everyone? And by definition, that falls within the public education system. And reading the comments, I want to just be clear one more time. What I've said is that charter schools receive public dollars and they're privately managed. That's what a charter school is. And I think we should try to come up with the best high-quality system we can, where we are all publicly managing our public dollars and our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. And Leroy, can you wrap up this question, please?
Yeah, I think the best way to answer this question is to tell you this little story um about springtime in Acorn Woodland, our students are graduating from our school, and they get, I get three questions. The first question is, um, Mr. Gaines, when are you gonna create a middle school for us? When are you gonna make Acorn Woodland a middle school? Because we don't have options right now that we like in East Oakland. I'm like, we don't, we're, it's not gonna happen, we don't have the funds for that. The second question is, uh, um, can you help me get into the Brewer? Can you help me get my kid into Mount Clare, um, to Claremont? And I'm like, well, just put it on your, put it on your list, but it's, it's open choice. You know how many kids from Acorn Woodland from the, from the east side get in there? We, I had one family get in, every year, everyone always puts that as a top choice. And then they go, and then they go back, and they're like, you know what, Mr. Gaines, we're gonna bring our kids to Spire, we're gonna bring our kids to Charter, because it's right here. It's the best option that we have. So that's to say that the families aren't giving up on O U S D because um they want to, and the charters don't exist because of that. Um, they, because they're just, you know, magically appeared. They're because of reason, because our families didn't ha- didn't have those opportunities to be able to go to these other schools, they didn't have quality schools around them. Um, and the system basically failed them. So that's to say, don't, all we could do is support our kids who are in charter schools, because they're public schools. Our families are there, our kids are there. Often, our kids go back and forth, they're in a traditional district, and sometimes they're in a charter, and then sometimes we have kids who aren't both. We had to take care of our kids. If you're an Oakland kid, um, and you're an Oakland family, uh, similar to my growing up, like, I know my mom, she would have done the same thing for me, um, and being in a position to be able to support all, all Oakland children, that's, that's what I'm here to do. So, so yeah.
Thank you candidates so much for your answers, I appreciate it. Um, next, I'm excited to introduce Mr. Chris Thomas, who was an educator from Ascend, who will ask our candidates our final question of the evening.
Good evening, candidates. My name is Christopher Thomas, and I'm a student support assistant at the Ascend School. I'm here representing Ascend, my family, and most importantly, the community of Oakland. One thing noticing our current school system to date is that our children don't receive a lot of opportunities in order to instill confidence and character within them to get over the educational or mental hurdles they may come across. Um, my question to you all is, what does the board need to do in order to effectively accelerate the plan of reading progress made in Black and Latinx communities? Where in just one of four of our kids are at grade level reading? Uh, with that being said, what responsibility would you take as a board member in order to ensure this situation is rectified on your watch? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Thomas, for that really awesome question. Um, I think that's been a consensus the whole night, is that all of our children need access. So I'm just gonna reiterate that two-part question um for the candidates. What does the board need to do immediately with the plan to dramatically accelerate reading progress made by Black and Latinx children of who just one and four are on grade level? Mike, you can start, please.
Great, thank you. Um, I, I think this is a, a case of uh two things can be true at the same time. Um, our schools have historically underperformed when it comes to serving our communities, especially Black and Brown communities. But I also reject some of these scores based on standardized testing, which we also know is historically racist. And so we do know as a community, and even as a country, what it takes to provide a quality education to our young folks. We know what will produce the biggest results. We know if we have full support and wraparound services for our families at our schools, that, that will lead to greater outcomes. We know that if we dramatically reduce class size, that especially in K through third grade, we can dramatically improve outcomes. These are the two things that I will move to do immediately. You know, we need to reprioritize the budget within O U S D to provide the funding to make that happen. I'm really excited about the Sustainable Community Schools redesign model like they're using in Chicago, Illinois, Cincinnati, Ohio, and L A, that's producing great results and lowering the achievement gap. I think that needs to be the primary work of this new school board to dedicate themselves to finally tearing down these historic barriers that have existed in Oakland well beyond my lifetime, and that's what I'll work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Leroy, can you answer the question also? It's scrolling on the bottom if you need to see it again.
Yeah, so, you know, I get elected to school board, um, this November. I'll be the only school board member that's actually ever been able to make these gains that we're talking about. Um, forty percent of my kids, um, at Acorn Woodland, were proficient on the E L A assessment. Um, close to eighty and ninety percent of them were proficient, came to F and P, which is a teacher, um, that's assessment, not a standardized assessment. Um, so the thing is, we made it happen at the school. You could get, you could give me a little one, and I could, I could do it myself, I could teach the kid to read. Right, so I know what it takes to get kids to read. Um, it's not policy, it's really just sort of common sense. Like, our teachers have the strategies, we just gotta get out of their way and give them the resources and the tools to make it happen. Um, we gotta get the money and the funds to this, to the um, to the principals. Um, for the last, what, maybe eight, nine years, we haven't had an E L A curriculum that's been adopted by, by O U S D that's matched the Common Core standards. Um, we just started getting uh the tools that we need to run our balanced literacy programs. Um, and now we're needing to make adjustments so that we're actually having more complex So these are all practices that we know, um, the teachers know it, it's not magic, it's not, not something, it's not something that we have to do completely extra, we just gotta make sure that um, that we're just providing those resources and those tools to the teachers and really just getting out of their way. We have some smart teachers out there that could, that, that could do amazing things, so.
Thank you, Leroy. Jorge, can you answer the same question also, please?
Uh, I think what we need to, the bottom line here is that we need to understand that the failure uh in Oakland is by design. The experience that many Black and Brown children experience is not because there's something wrong with us. There is a whole system behind that, yes, there are Black, uh, there are achieving Black, White, Asian and Latino kids at every school. But the larger amount of those kids of that, that, of that ethnicity, of that color, of children of color, they are failing. Why are they failing? Because they're broken? I doubt it. I think what's broken here is the system that we expose these children to. The standardized testing, the narrow curriculum. We don't have really a rich literacy program. We have a program that teaches kids how to prepare yourself to take a test. That's like me trying to teach you reading by giving you the instructions for the I R S or some technical uh guidebook.
You have fifteen seconds.
Okay, and so, uh, I'm here to just claim that we have to get rid of all these antiquated obsolete means of, of the way that we teach kids and go back to empowering our children and our families, and we could overcome this problem, we could accelerate achievement in Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you, Jorge. And the second part of the question, I'll start with you again. What responsibility would you take as a board member to ensure that this happens on your watch?
Well, I, I, it starts by, org- board members have to ta- be active. No, no more of this sitting behind the desk and see what happens. As a board member, I, you, you asked a little while ago if I would visit every school. I would visit every school and organize every parent group, and have everybody go downtown with me. That's how we're gonna get things done. It's not gonna be uh by virtual reality or by sending people letters, it's gonna be by coming together as one strong voice. Black, Brown, Asian, and progressive whites coming together to change the system. That's what I'm going to invest in, that's what I'm going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mike, can you answer the second part of the question also, please? You're muted, you're still muted, Mike.
Great, thank you, sorry about that. Um, this is the work that I've dedicated my whole life to um, and the work that I plan to be judged on, and this is why I'm running for school board. Um, I actually disagree with one of the previous statements. Of the three of us, Mr. Gaines has the least amount of experience in educating youth in Oakland. Um, I can introduce you to my students across the country who have succeeded to extremely high levels after going through my programs. Unfortunately, I've also had to visit my former students in Juvenile Hall. This is Oakland, California, and some of us have been dedicated to this work for decades. I am a community advocate and a community organizer for public education and for the betterment of my community. This is the work that I do, and I look forward to the opportunity of working with everyone here, because I know we all want the same thing, which is the best possible outcomes for all of our students. And that's the work that I plan to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Leroy, can you wrap up that last part of the question, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, no, I just wanna say, like, with Jorge, um, Jorge's been a principal, he's been in the schools, um, he understands how to make this stuff, make it quick, make it work, and he knows exactly what our students are needing. Um, I would say, you know, I'll put myself on there too, about knowing that. But the thing is, it's more important than just knowing it, is being able to ask But the thing is, it's more important than just knowing it, is being able to ask, ask questions, right? Ask the right questions, and then to be able to listen to other folks. Listen to our other board members, listen to the community. I think it's important that we're working in collaboration, um, being able to, like, stay on one side, but then be able to listen to the other side and understand. Because the work of the board, I can know how to teach a kid to read on my own. I have very lo, I have a lot of confidence in that. Um, but to get a policy passed is gonna require the, the whole board. You need to be able to get along with everyone else on that board and be able to make things happen, um, because it's not a one-man show. I think that that's gonna be one of the key things to actually get things moving. Um, it's knowing the best, not just knowing the best practice, um, but it's actually getting, getting the whole board along. And then also being able to work with the district leaders to be able to get that going, so.
Thank you, Leroy, for your, uh, response. Okay, we're coming to the final stretch. I know it's been a long evening. I thank you guys for your patience.
Yeah, I, yeah, I wanna, uh, just echo that. Thank you. And I also wanna thank Chris Thomas, the parent from, uh, Ascend, for, for dropping that question. Thank you, thank you. Uh, we're gonna transition to the, um, candidates' closing statements, uh, during this time. In this forum, you have about 90 seconds. So I'm gonna just share, uh, ask your closing statement, anything that didn't come out during these questions. Uh, again, you have 90 seconds. Uh, we're running behind schedule, so we just wanna keep you guys in schedule. So, I'm gonna go ahead and start with, uh, Mike Hutchinson, uh, closing statements, 90 seconds.
Great, thank you, and, and thank you for having me here today. Um, I know especially around the issue of charter schools, um, because I've had to be the tip of the spear for a lot of issues here in Oakland over the last 10 years, that there's often a lot of misunderstanding about where I really stand or how I really feel. And so, the first thing is, uh, most people know that I'm always available to talk about these issues, and I welcome having these conversations. And that's the work that I've done over the last nine years, is bring people together around these issues so we can have better outcomes for, for our students. Whether it's forming Open Oakland Public Education Network or being a founding member of the Journey for Justice National Alliance or working hard to get Assembly Bill 1505 passed this last year. I've been involved by any means necessary, once the school board closed the schools I had been at and made the communities that I had been a part of spread into the wind. I think it was unacceptable what happened to La Zira in 2012 also. They should've never been forced to become a charter school. They should've been allowed to stay a public school just.
Yep.
Lastly, I'm very proud of the endorsements I've been able to get this year. I'm endorsed by the Democratic Party, the Green Party, and DSA. I'm endorsed by OEA, SEIU, and the Central Labor Council. And I also have personal endorsements from school board members in other cities and the former Alameda County School Board, or, sorry, Superintendent of Schools, Sheila Jordan. Hopefully, we can work on coming together in Oakland and no longer let outsiders pit us against each other. Please vote Mike Hutchinson for quality public.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, we're gonna pivot to, uh, Jorge Nirmas.
Gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. What's going on now is the battle for our children's minds and their identity. And I'm committed to defend our children's creativity, imagination, and intellectual capacity. And that could only happen by improving the Oakland Unified School District. I'm seeing some of the feedback. They've had all this opportunity. Why they haven't, why haven't they done it? Well, that's the question. There hasn't been the leadership in the past. There is a need to totally redefine the Oakland Unified School District and public education, public schools, as, uh, people keep insisting. And I believe that. So, I'm here, I've been a lifelong educator, even when I was in college and worked as an after-school leader at school sites when I was a coach. So I have been embraced by all the big dogs downtown. I've been embraced and adored by the thousands of parents and children that's lives that I have touched. Thank you.
Thank you, Jorge. Uh, and last but not least, Leroy Gaines.
Hey, guys, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate it being here. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very much, folks would describe my leadership as a listening leader. Like, I'm a person who, I step into the role, um, and I don't do a lot of talking. I just like to listen to folks and figure out what's out there, what do we need to do, and support people get there. Um, I have just so much love for, so much love for our families and for our kids. Um, and every day, I've been struggling this last year being away from my school site because that's the work of joy, being around our kids, being around our families. That's what brings me joy. That is what fulfills me. And, um, I wanted to say, you know, I appreciate being here, looking forward to being your next, um, your next board member. Um, I wanna also say Jorge, uh, Nirmas, I'm here, and he is the person who, he started Las Falita, it's a school that a lot of us modeled after, um, in the small school movement. Um, tremendous bilingual, uh, elementary school. And, you know, I had a chance, he's a wonderful leader. And, you know, when you're looking at the ballot, you're going out to vote. I really suggest that you guys please put me out first, right? Vote for me first on November or on October. Um, Jorge has second. He's a tremendous leader as well. Yeah, appreciate you. Please have a good night.
Uh, thank you, guys. That was, that was awesome. Uh, candidates, I just wanna personally and sincerely thank you guys on behalf of all the families, the families in the chat, uh, for just being here this evening. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication to the students and families of Oakland throughout your careers, some of you decades. Uh, we, we just greatly appreciate the fight for our families. So we're grateful for your interest in representing our community of over 5,000 families who have chosen charter schools in Oakland Unified School District. And my families in the chat, we've been watching you guys and your comments and your banter. And we just thank you and appreciate you. If you can give all our candidates a big round of applause in the chat and just show them some love, give them some spirit fingers for, for all their, their dedication and, and their answers tonight. And I got a little homework for you guys to do really quick. Based on what you know about the candidates so far and what you've heard them speak on tonight, we wanna hear from you. Please take the survey by texting. If you had to vote tonight, right now, this evening, who would you vote for? As you know, in Oakland, we have ranked choice voting. So please indicate on the survey what would your first, your second, and your third choice candidates would be. Now, Leroy gave y'all his own thoughts. Put your own. Go ahead. For the families you see, um, on your screen, the scan me code. If you have your camera phone, go ahead and just snap that little QR code with your cell phone. It's gonna pop up for you, or you can go right in the chat box to that link. Just put in your first, second, and third ranked choice really quickly while we're wrapping up the evening. And we're gonna check out and see what our responses were. While that's happening, while we're tallying up all those responses, we're gonna have two FIA leaders who are here to share two important opportunities with you. Tonight, you decided to join this forum, and we wanna invite you to stay engaged and continue to exercise your power and leadership.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mary Rose Martinez, and I am a youth organizer at FIA. And I'm here to give you guys a very special invitation to our FIA Summit of Citywide Election Kickoff and Voting Celebration at Ascend for all of our D5 families. Thank you, families, educators, youth, and community members for coming up to this candidate forum. You guys showed us a lot of power this evening, and I want to give only a very special thank you for all of you to join us to our Citywide Election Kickoff and FIA Summit on October 6th. We will be coming together from all of the districts across Oakland in even bigger numbers to show our power as charter, charter school stakeholders and to stand up for access to quality public schools. Before we wrap up this evening, please RSVP to the FIA Founding Summit for Citywide Elections and Voting Celebrations at Ascend on October 6th. You can find the link in the chat box or on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Make sure you sign up and you RSVP to stay involved, community. We continue this movement. Uh, we're gonna wrap it up. I wanna thank the audience for staying so engaged and involved in the chat. Uh, I wanna give a shout out to those students who are also in the chat, listening to this conversation. Uh, parents, uh, familia out in the community. Uh, and I also wanna thank the, the candidates for being here and, and answering the questions. Um, um, it was, it was good energy. Um, we're gonna go, go ahead and transition, close this out. Uh, once again, you control what happens moving forward. You have the remote, you have the control. Uh, go ahead and vote. Uh, make your vote count. Um, and we're gonna pivot to India to see if we have the results.
I'm still getting, I'm getting results in right now. This is so exciting. I'm, I'm waiting to see, um, so, we still got some people coming in. Still got the chat rumbling right now. So I'm gonna give it probably another 20, 30 seconds, and then I'm just gonna call off what we got. Uh, so it looks like so far, uh, in third place, we have Sheila. In second place, Jorge. And first place, Leroy. So, um, again, we wanna thank all the families, especially big thank you to all the youth being involved. Um, even though some of you might not be old enough to vote yet, it's still super important that you learn the importance of democracy and having your voice heard and learning what's important. Because one day, one of you guys may be sitting in these seats and running for this school board and be the voice of your brothers and sisters and nieces and nephews. So make sure that even if you can't do anything physically, you continue to get the word out, spread the word. Let your classmates and your teachers and families know about the importance of the upcoming school board election. So I wanna thank you all for being here, and thank you for demonstrating your voting power and your voice for District Five. Just remember that if you just stay engaged, vote, hold everyone accountable that is responsible for your future. And we look forward to seeing you all at the FIA Founding Summit Elections Kickoff and Drive-Thru Celebration on Tuesday, October the 6th. Thank you, all the candidates, again. You guys were amazing. This was an amazing opportunity. Thank you, Christian, for your help. Thank you, FIA. You guys are awesome, and I cannot wait to see who's gonna be next in District Five.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Make sure you follow FIA on Instagram and Facebook. I stay connected. Uh, appreciate you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great night.